One nation, under God, in the physical, in the routine, justice for all.
If you'll remain standing, I'll call on Councilmember Freddie Norris to lead us in invocation. Heavenly Father, we are deeply thankful for the day that we've enjoyed. The weather sort of caught us by surprise, some of us, but we're here and we're glad to be participating in something that's very important for the citizens of our city. We take this seriously and we pray that you'll give us wisdom and understanding. We think about just moments, I guess, or many moments for the veterans among us, the veterans who are out there, our servicemen and women across the globe. Thank you for their courage, for their desire to serve. Bless them and protect them, Lord Jesus. We're grateful for your blessings and your love. Please accept this prayer in the name of your son. Amen. Amen. Be seated. I will ask Clerk Cashin to call the roll.
Patrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Trigg?
Here.
Norris?
Here.
Shoemaker?
Here.
Neal?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Benell?
Present.
Burris?
Here.
Lowery?
Here.
All right, we have 100% attendance and we appreciate you all's attendance because we have important business to take care of, the first of which is we're going to approve our agenda that we are going to go by tonight. The potential agenda arrived at your location on Thursday. You've had a chance to look over it. I will entertain a motion that we continue tonight's meeting using the proposed agenda.
Motion, Lowery.
Is there a second?
Second, Benell.
Is there any discussion? There being none, I'll call a question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We'll proceed with the proposed agenda, the first item of which is to approve the minutes from our council meeting back on October the 27th. I will entertain a motion to enter those into the record. You've had a chance to look over them. I will entertain a motion to approve those for the record.
Motion.
From Councilman Neal, is there a second?
Second.
From Councilman Burris, okay. Any discussion? All in favor of entering these minutes into the record indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the minutes from the October 27th meeting are in the record. Next, I want to make an introduction right here. I'm going to call a Glasgow Police Chief Guy Howey to the podium. We are going to introduce a new person involved in the police department. Chief Howey?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Not too long ago, you all approved the funding from the opioid funding for a police advocate. And we did our search and boy, did we hit a home run in the young lady I'm about to introduce. She hit every pinpoint item we needed and you'll see that here in just a minute when I introduce her. So, Brianne, if you'll stand up. This is Brianna Brooks. She's a lifetime Barron County resident. She graduated from Glasgow High School and then continued her education at Eastern Kentucky University and graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, bang point one. Then on Brianna worked for the Department of Community-Based Services, DCBS, boom, point two. She worked there for approximately 2.5 years and transitioned to Bluegrass Professional Counseling where she worked as a targeted case manager and court liaison with therapist intern, bang point three. Upon graduating with her master's degree in social work from Western Kentucky in May of '25, Brianna obtained her certified social worker license and began practicing as a therapist until obtaining her new position with the Glasgow Police Department. Council Mayor, I'd like to introduce Brianna Brooks, our new police advocate.
Welcome, Brianna.
I told her she didn't have to say anything, so.
You told her she didn't have to say anything?
Yeah, I did.
This time?
Yes, sir. But we look forward, she's already hit the ground running. She got thrown into the fire pit with the accident and everything else and been following up, keeping track with that and making all the rounds and we're very proud to have her and we look forward for great things and thank you all for the funding.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks for doing a good job of searching for an excellent candidate and we're looking forward to having you being a part of incredibly tremendous police department of Glasgow City Police. Thank you very much for being here. All right, we've got some old business to deal with, Rich.
First item is municipal order, appointing Woody Gardner, reappointing Woody Gardner to the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission. This appointment is a three-year term expiring October 31, 2025.
All right, you have heard the reappointment of Woody Gardner to the Water and Sewer Commission. I will entertain a motion that we approve that.
Motion, Kirkpatrick.
Is there a second?
Second, Benell.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this reappointment? All right, I'll call a question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right, we will move and make Mr. Gardner aware of the fact that he has been reappointed to the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission.
Next item is an ordinance amending the ordinance number 2025-375, the City of Glasgow annual budget for July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. This relates to the Glasgow Police Department and the Glasgow Fire Department. Be it hereby ordained by the city that its annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 26 shall be and hereby is amended as follows. The sum of $24,500 is hereby appropriated from the unappropriated general fund and transferred as follows. Subparagraph A, $9,000 is transferred to the Police Department Technical Account for increase in Axon contract for body cameras and tasers for the three additional officers. Subparagraph B, $3,500 is transferred to the Police Department Uniforms and Clothing Account for uniforms and gear for the three additional officers. Subparagraph C, $10,500 is transferred to the Police Department Technical Supplies Account for computers and vests for the three additional officers. And lastly, subparagraph D, $1,500 is transferred to the Police Department Communications and Postage Account for cell phones for the three additional officers. The next section says that the sum of $11,936.33 is hereby re-appropriated within the general fund and transferred as follows, and this relates to the Fire Department. $11,936.33 is transferred from the Fire Department Technical Equipment Account to the Fire Department Technical Supplies Account for the purchase of high-pressure lifting bags. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Thank you, Rich. This is the second reading of this ordinance that is before you, amending the budget for the fiscal year to make these improvements. And we will bring it up for a vote if I can get a motion to approve it.
Of course.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Benell.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now do we have discussion on this particular ordinance?
This is out of the general fund, right? We're moving money.
Yep.
Is there, and I've looked through this, is there an unappropriated label in here somewhere or is that just simply where it says, taking it out of the fund balance, out of the general fund? Do you know what? Victoria, I was going to ask her before.
Yeah, I'm not real sure, but I'm making an assumption that it's just in the general fund that has not previously been appropriated by the budget and so that those funds are just being allocated for that particular purpose.
I didn't see an unappropriated label on here.
There's not an unappropriated fund as such in the general fund. That's where we keep things if they are not appropriated, but they're not declared unappropriated.
See like the fund, funding balance, the end funding balance, is that where that's coming out of?
Well, what you'd have is you'd have the general fund and all of the different accounts that we have where we expense these accounts, like the Recreation Department or the Street Department or whatever, are a part of that fund, but then there's a balance in there that's not spoken for and that's what this is from.
Then that might be, would be labeled something. That's fine.
Okay. Other discussion? There being none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Norris?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Lowery?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Benell?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
That's all nine yeses.
Okay, nine yeses. The second reading of this ordinance is passed unanimously.
Next item is the second reading amending the text of the city's zoning regulations codified as Chapter 158 of the City of Glasgow Code of Ordinances. That whereas the Joint City-County Planning Commission of Barron County met in regular session on July 21st of this year, conducted a public hearing relative to certain proposed text amendments to the city's zoning regulations, and at the conclusion of the hearing, because of the proposed text amendments were in agreement with the Glasgow zoning ordinance and in compliance with the goals and objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan, the City-County Planning Commission unanimously approved the following text amendments. And whereas the Joint City-County Planning Commission of Barron County has forwarded those text amendments to the council for consideration, a copy of which are attached as Exhibit A. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the city's zoning regulations codified as Chapter 158 of the city's Code of Ordinances shall be and hereby are amended to read as follows, and any words being added are indicated by a solid single line drawn underneath them, and any words being deleted by a single line drawn through them, and all effective text being highlighted in yellow. The amended text is attached as Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference as if specifically set forth. Section 2, with regard to the text amendments to Sections 158.295, 296, 308-sub-C, and 038-sub-D, this ordinance shall take effect on July 1 of 2026 and upon passage and publication according to law. Section 3, all other text amendments shall take effect immediately upon passage and publication according to law.
This is the second reading of this ordinance, remending some of the wording of the city's zoning regulations. First of all, let me see, is there a motion that we approve the second reading of this ordinance?
Motion.
Okay, is that from Councilman Kirkpatrick?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second, Benell.
Okay, second from Councilman Benell. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? There being no discussion, then I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Lowery?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Benell?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
It's all nine yeses.
Okay, we have second reading of that ordinance unanimously approved.
Next item is the second reading of an ordinance that rezones the property located at 909, 911, 913, 915 West Main Street and also located at 211 and 215 Rogers Road that contains seven and a half acres more or less from light industrial district to a general business district, I-1 to B-2. It appearing that the applicant and owner Edmonton State Bank has requested a zoning change for the property just described, containing 7.5 acres more or less in the city from I-1 to B-2 classification. A drawing of said property subject to rezoning is attached as Exhibit B, or excuse me, Exhibit A, and incorporated herein by reference. A trial-type due process hearing concerning this proposed zoning change was held on April 21st by the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission. It resulted in a unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from I-1 to B-2. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council and are hereby adopted by the council and are attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B, are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property located as follows, 909, 911, 913, 915 West Main and 211, 215 Rogers Road, containing seven and a half acres are hereby rezoned from I-1 to a B-2 classification. The real property covered by the ordinance again being described in Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
Okay, you've heard the second reading. This is a rezoning ordinance and this is our second consideration of this. First things first, is there a motion to approve the second reading of this ordinance?
Motion, Lowery.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
From Councilman Neal, all right. Is there discussion regarding the second reading of this rezoning ordinance?
On page 2, Section 2, just some more information, highway service business district. What's that?
Kevin Mait is with us. He is the guy who understands all of that nomenclature, sir.
I know we talked about it a little bit before, but it's still a little fuzzy.
Yeah, highway service business district is a zoning classification, which the classification itself primarily services a regional area rather than just the community of Glasgow. It's more entailed for that classification to be located in or adjacent to state highways for larger regional traffic commuters. And what that will transpire to be is a B-3 zoning or highway service business zoning classification. It's intended to serve the counties remaining, like Metcalf, Monroe, and those things. B-2 general business is a classification where it primarily services our community in the general area, just Glasgow, the county itself. It may serve a regional purpose, but that's the primary difference between the two.
What would be expected to be on that property?
My understanding is that there may potential for future development of their banking, Edmonton State Banking facilities. B-3 typically see your big box retail stores. That's a pretty big one as well in that classification.
All right.
Kevin, you know, on the map, it shows a little slither of land that goes over where it's so-called, it connects to the highway. Are they going to make that a road? Is that the intention? Is that going to get a street designation as a road or how are we going to play that? Or how, what's the plan?
So that, I think that's the next item that's on the agenda because this fronts on Rogers Road and on West Main Street. That schematic drawing that you might see is probably in the next agenda item packet is my guess.
Are you referring to the one that's going to go to Happy Valley?
Yes.
That's the next one.
This one is the, on West Main Street.
Edmonton State Bank are the applicant owners of that one.
Strip right there that we're talking about.
Next agenda item then.
Are you, are you clear on that, Joe?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there more discussion? Thank you, Kevin. If there's no more discussion, then I, wait a minute, Joe.
Hold on, I think me and Freddie both were confused. Freddie was talking about the property that is, are we on the wrong?
You're on the wrong page.
Edmonton State Bank.
Yeah. You're on Happy Valley, y'all on Happy Valley.
We were both, all right, I'm done.
Okay, we don't want any confusion. If we need to keep discussing it, we will.
I'll get his papers in order.
Okay, it's good. Take care of that. All right, I will ask the clerk then to call the roll.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes, ma'am.
Benell?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Norris? Lowery?
Yes.
Trigg?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
That's all nine.
Okay, we have a unanimous consent on passing second reading of that ordinance and as referred to earlier, we have another ordinance to be considered if you want to move into that, Rich.
This is an ordinance that rezones the property located at 629 West Cherry Street. It contains a little over eight acres and the request is from an R2 medium-density residential district to a B-3 highway service business district classification. It appearing that the owner and applicant K&amp;M Services has requested a zoning change for the property located at 629 West Cherry Street in Glasgow, containing 8.022 acres more or less from an R2 medium-density residential district to a B-3 highway service business district classification. A schematic drawing of this property subject to rezoning is attached as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. A trial-type due process hearing concerning this zoning change was held on July 21st of this year by the Joint City-County Planning and Zoning Commission, resulting in the unanimous recommendation by the commission that the property be rezoned from R2 to B-3. Copies of the findings and recommendations of the commission have been forwarded to the council, are hereby adopted by the council, and attached to this ordinance as Exhibit B and incorporated herein by reference. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the city as follows. Section 1, the findings and recommendations of the commission, copies of which are attached as Exhibit B are hereby approved in all respects. Section 2, the zoning for the property at 629 West Cherry Street shall be changed from R2 to B-3 classification. The real property covered by this ordinance being described in Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference. Section 3, all future development of this property shall comply with the requirements of the Development Plan Ordinance adopted by the council on December 30, 1991. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law.
All right, you've heard the second reading of this ordinance and the explanation by Rich on that. I will entertain a motion that we bring this up for approval on second reading.
Motion.
Okay, from Councilman Benell, the second, from Councilman Kirkpatrick? Okay, we have a motion and a second. What about discussion on this particular ordinance?
Freddie had the same question. I mean, the question that we, it was the same, the question that's meant for this one, so.
I understand. So, answer still holds true for that. The access strip that you're speaking about that connects to Happy Valley Road, that's no different than any other access strip that a person might own that attaches to a roadway. They front on two separate roads, West Cherry Street and also Happy Valley Street, or Happy Valley Road. That access strip would remain and could be utilized as an entrance/exit there. It already has an approved entrance and exit for Happy Valley Road. Unless there's further development done on the property, as of right now, that access strip doesn't go all the way into the parking lot that's located on West Cherry Street's side. That would have to be further updated. They're seeking out the commercial zoning classification because a portion of that structure at the time was going to be utilized for an event business and then the other section was going to be used for high-density residential development. That is permitted in our commercial zoning classifications simply because utilities are typically there where commercial zoning is with regards to roadway infrastructure, utilities, things of that nature, and usually the roadway itself is a bit wider in your commercial zoning districts to handle the anticipated traffic volume. That's why residential development is allowed in your commercial zoning classification, but not vice versa, not go the other direction because typically your residential streets are a bit smaller, they have on-street parking, a little bit difficult, more difficult to get down and get through. That since changed after they had submitted that application to the Planning Commission for the use when Glasgow Christian Academy leased that building from them. It still falls into the same category because that is a private school structure, which constitutes a business essentially. You're paying for a product, service, or good. So the classification still holds true. Now, if that school system decides to leave there and relocate, the property is still zoned commercial, but it still allows for residential development in it. They would have to bring that building up to residential building code standards, but it does allow for that in there.
So, it's ironic that today we're having what we're doing because the, and I got to add, the previous piece of property that the Edmonton Bank is doing is on the corner of 6880 and Rogers Road. And this one happens to be on West Cherry, predominantly residential area up to past the cemetery. And then the only way they can get to a highway is that one little access road. So, you know, the last time I asked and I was wondering, and I still am, I say they decide to make this residential, are they going to designate this, would we end up designate that little access path as a road for the amount of traffic that they might have or would it only entry on Cherry?
Right, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there, but no, it's just the same as an access strip, an entrance/exit, only the same as you might pull into any other properties in Glasgow, whether they're commercial or industrial or residential in nature. It would not be designated as a road for that. Now, entrance and exit, obviously it would happen. So, the Planning Commission doesn't determine what their zoning classification is going to be. That's up to the applicant, it's their application. So, the previous item, they sought out a general business B-2 classification. In this item, the applicant sought out the B-3 zoning classification, so.
All right, so one last question. If they didn't have that little strip going out to, what is that, 31, no, 90?
Happy Valley, yeah.
Out to 90?
Yes, sir.
Then would it be eligible for the B-3 or would it only be eligible for B-2?
Yeah, good question. So, B-3 doesn't necess, just because it says highway service business, does not mean that it's designated only on highways themselves. If you are relatively close to access to a highway where you don't have to upgrade or update the road infrastructure, you can have a B-3 zoning classification. So, the B-3 is a highway service classification, but it doesn't necessarily have to locate on a highway business, or I mean a highway roadway, okay? As long as you're relatively close. Now, there's no specific distance, but if there's no requirement for roadway or infrastructure upgrades, like adding shoulders, adding turning lanes, it's seen as a possibility to be rezoned to that classification too.
Is there an issue to, if they were connecting the entrance from Happy Valley and Cherry, if they connected that little piece?
Yeah.
Is that, would that fall in your?
Yeah, we would have some, some overview of that with regards to how they connect those two because you're going from a parking lot into a potential intersection, whether, regardless of where it's at, it's inside the property itself, so it doesn't really necessarily pertain to public works or anybody like that. Still, it's a safety issue and we do get involved just to verify that their turning lanes or their lanes are wide enough, their visibility is enough that they can see. Public safety is paramount with the Planning Commission, that's the first thing and foremost. And then after that, we start following what rules and regulations we have. So, yeah, we would.
It would have to come to you.
Yeah, they would have to submit a development plan for that, for internal control of how their roadway is to be made inside. Now, that roadway wouldn't be turned over to the city for maintenance, it's not going to be a roadway like you're thinking like that.
And that was going to be my, because of what Randy brought up, and that was his association with the schools, with us knowing. with the schools, with us knowing that was a parking lot with only that limited access off of Cherry, if they decided to make, you know, entry and exit from 90 all the way over to Cherry?
Right.
Would you have to designate part, you know, it's gonna come to you, but you'd have to designate part of that, and at that one point or another, it had to, it seems like it would have to be a road. I mean.
Well, it's, it's just, yeah, it's just an access, though. I mean, you think of the access going into Walmart, you know, going down the hill from, from Highway 90, that's just an access, you know, that's not a full-fledged road. So it just, it's just wide enough that you can allow for two vehicles to pass, a school bus, or, you know, a school bus is not typically gonna go up into that area. They're gonna be picking up at the roadway, but garbage pickup, anything like that, they still have to be able to pass between each other. And we would get involved in that side of things then, and requiring that. It just wouldn't be turned over to the city for maintenance.
All right. Any further discussion on this item? Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trigg?
Yes.
Lowry?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Neal?
Yes.
Shoemaker?
Yes.
Burris?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Banal?
Yes.
Norris?
Yes.
That's all nine yeses.
Okay, we have unanimous nine. That particular second reading of this ordinance passes unanimously. This is very important, I'm gonna tell you, because this is the first time that this decision has been made, and I wanna be sure and tell it to you correctly. Because of the terrible wind chill that is forecast for tomorrow, Matt Mutter with the Veterans Service has decided to move the Veterans Day Parade tomorrow to the South Central Kentucky Cultural Center. So it will be indoors, down at the South Central Kentucky Cultural Center, also known as the Museum of the Barrens. Now, the DAV also normally has food for the participants down there as well, so they're kinda gonna be set up anyway, but they have gotten permission, and it's still gonna be the same time, 12 noon, but it will all be indoors at the South Central Kentucky Cultural Center, as opposed to coming down through here based on the wind chill factor that was forecast for tomorrow. I wanna make sure that, and that just, that was still going on when we started this particular meeting, so that's been completed during this meeting. So I wanna be sure and get that out there to everybody, and we can get that out to the press as well. Also, we want to remind you that since the last time we had the council meeting, the city property taxes have been put in the mail, and you should have gotten yours in. If you're a city property owner, you should have gotten yours in the mail. If not, let us know. We'll, Danielle will find, will find where it went to, but we do want you to know that those have gone out, and we are taking, you can walk in and pay them, except for tomorrow, because tomorrow, because it being a government holiday of Veterans Day, City Hall will be closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. So any day but tomorrow, be looking for those in the mail. Now, while we're talking about Veterans Day, we've got the parade taken care of, where it's gonna be over at the Cultural Center, but the National Guard Armory tomorrow night is going to be the location of the Veterans Day Dinner. This is always something that people look forward to. If you've never been, you really, it's an amazing feeling to go and be a part of the Veterans Day Dinner. The doors open, the National Guard Armory, at 6 o'clock tomorrow night. The dinner will be served at 7 o'clock tomorrow night. Veterans are there free, guests are $10, and it's, that's a bargain for all the food that they provide for you down there. And you'll also have fellowship and appreciation. The guest speaker is gonna be Lieutenant Colonel Jason Simpson, and then we will have a performance by the Glasgow Community Band, which will get you in a very patriotic mood as well. So it's a full Veterans Day tomorrow, starting with the parade down at the Cultural Center and ending with the Veterans Day Dinner tomorrow. So I want you to be aware of that. Couple of more things that are coming up before we meet again. The Hometown Showdown Lip Sync Battle Part 3 at the Plaza Theater is gonna be on Saturday the 15th. Lip Sync Battle Part 3 is back, bigger, better, and more entertaining than ever. Tickets are on sale at the historic Plaza. That's one of those that you don't wanna miss either, because they are putting a whole lot of information. We have some other neat things coming up. I'm gonna tell you about a couple of these. The Barron County Historical Society's Barron Countyans Political Servants Far and Near. That's gonna be a really nice presentation that's absolutely free on Thursday night, November the 20th. And Tommy Jackson, a well-known historian and retired banker, is gonna be there with an engaging presentation exploring the political history and leadership of Barron Countyans near and far. Also, on the 20th, that same day at the Plaza Theater, Children's Day Celebration will be going on. The theme this year is "We Got the Beat." And it's, I don't have a time for this, but it's gonna be Thursday evening, "We Got the Beat" on the November the 20th. So I'll be looking forward to that. And we have several other things that are coming up in the announcements. I just love how much is going on around here in our community, from events. We have the Light Up and Lift Up Vendor Fair on the North Public Square, November the 22nd, from noon until 4:00. You can visit the Barron County Family YMCA and fill out or drop off your application. This is gonna be a very neat thing. You can email it to tara.bailey@barroncountyymca.org. Light Up and Lift Up Vendor Fair. And then, of course, we have the Light Up Glasgow on Saturday, November the 22nd. A very fabulous evening indeed, with a lot of pre-event activities. Mr. and Ms. Claus at the gazebo at 4:00, the light-up ceremony at 5:00 PM, and listen to this, we have performances by the Barron County and the Glasgow School Choirs as we light up the Glasgow Square and kick off the holiday season. That's the tip of the iceberg. I'm covering the highlights, but if I were you, I would look closer to make sure you don't miss any sort of a wonderful event as we move forward, with a lot of good things going on around here. All right, I will now entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all for being here, and have a good night.